Can you hear me okay?
Oh, much better.
All right, folks. I want to call to order the Bristol Tennessee City Council meeting of July 7th, 2020. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Pastor?
Yes.
Here.
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 Want to welcome everyone tonight and thank you for attending. Your interest in city government is appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available to you when you entered the room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I'll note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up sheet has been provided as you enter the council chambers for those individuals desiring to address city council during the appearance of citizens on our agenda. Also, I'll note that today we have, with the election of mayor and vice mayor, we will take a break for a short reception. It will be in the gym and everyone's welcome to have some refreshments and congratulate our new mayor and vice mayor. For the invocation and pledge, I'm asking Vice Mayor Malin Luttrell to introduce the folks who will be doing that for us.
Yes, at this time, I would like to ask Pastor Matt Cross of Surf Church, and he also serves as team chaplain for the Bristol Pirates, to lead us in the invocation. Following our invocation, I'd like to ask Councilman Chad King to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I want to give you gratitude for the gift of being alive today and the life of our city. God, we give you gratitude for leadership in our leaders here in our city, and not just that they are great leaders, but they're great servant leaders. They're our friends, our neighbors, our brothers and sisters, and their belief in love in our community is much like yours. God, we humbly ask that you give them wisdom to preside and help our community and guide us, and may they seek your guidance, that we may go in the right direction. And Father, we ask a special request this evening, that you shed your grace and mercy and healing covering us, our city, our state, and our nation from this disease. We humbly ask for your blessings and your provision upon Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia. But God, we want you to know that Bristol loves you. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, we say, amen.
Amen. Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Cross. So at this time, the city charter requires city council to select one of its members to serve as mayor and vice mayor each year beginning the 1st of July. Accordingly, it would be in order for me to ask if there's a motion to be made to choose a member for mayor for the coming year.
Mayor, I'd like to recommend Malin Luttrell, who served as vice mayor and has been very studied in city affairs in nomination for our upcoming mayor.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any additional nominations for mayor? Malin, this is your chance.
What'd you say?
All right, seeing none, I would think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Pastor?
Yes.
Yes.
See?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you and congratulations. May I now have a motion to select the vice mayor for the coming year?
Madam Mayor, it's my honor to nominate Vince Turner as our rising vice mayor.
Right, we have a nomination. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. Are there any additional nominations for vice mayor? I'll ask you the same thing. This is your chance. All right, I believe we are ready for a vote.
Pastor?
Yes.
Um...
Yes.
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 All right. If, I know sometimes people have comments. If we want to make them now or if you want to wait till later on in the agenda, we can do that. We're ready for our reception if everybody's ready to break for that. So we'll recess and go to the gym, which is out and across the way. And the council's going to be taking some pictures, so it's like a wedding. Don't wait for us. Go ahead and have something to eat or drink, so, thank you. All right.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Agenda items, Mr. Sora, do you have any items to be added to the agenda for this evening?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
Okay. Tonight, we have one proclamation and two recognitions on tonight's agenda. I have a proclamation for the Parks and Recreation and designating the month of July 2020 as Park and Recreation Month. I would like to ask Councilwoman Powers to read that proclamation. Mr. Aker, if you would step forward to the podium.
In the past, I've had the opportunity to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and it's a great commission. Parks and Recreation is definitely an opportunity for economic development, especially with our emphasis on tourism. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Bristol, Tennessee. And whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and region. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase the community's economic prosperity through increased parking values, expansion of the local tax credits towards tourism, the attraction and retention of people, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, and you may or may not know this, but Bristol has some of the best water in the nation. Protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Bristol, Tennessee recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, Mayor Bristol, Tennessee Mayor Luttrell, has hereby proclaimed July 2020 as Park and Recreation Month, the 7th day of July 2020.
Thank you, Councilwoman Powers, and congratulations, Mayor Luttrell and Vice Mayor Turner. And no, we have an outstanding Parks and Rec Department here in Bristol, Tennessee. It's kind of one of those boards that I didn't realize what I was getting myself into when I asked to be on it, but I'm very thankful I did. This year, Little Spring's been a little different because of the situation going on everywhere, but we've tried our best to keep the parks up and open as best we can and everything. And so thank you all very much for recognizing us.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to recognize our Bristol Police Department for their recent reaccreditation by the Tennessee Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. This recognition places our police department among the elite agencies in the state for the professionalism and standards of operations. I would like to ask Officer Jody Camper to come to the podium to accept the award and to speak to the significance of this recognition.
I wanted to thank the City Council tonight for this recognition of our reaccreditation. My name is Officer Jody Camper. If you just heard, I've been with the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department since 2008. I was recently appointed to the new accreditation manager after the unfortunate loss of Lieutenant Keith Feathers. But I have assisted Keith with accreditation process for the last past five years. When the horrible incident happened in Minnesota, I saw that the officer involved was doing things that I know do not comply with our own standards and training that we have established at the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department. It is also my understanding there is only one agency, Taliya, accredited in Minnesota, and that is the dispatch center. Right now, there's a lot of uncertainty in our nation's law enforcement community about the future. Our best defense against this uncertainty is our professionalism. Our department has been fortunate to be both Taliya and Taliya accredited for the past several years. This Tennessee Law Enforcement Accreditation Award is our fourth consecutive award from Taliya. Bristol was the leader in the Taliya accreditation process with Bristol becoming the pilot agency and the first to meet all standards for the state accreditation. From that point, our staff has served as mentors and assessors to other agencies throughout the state and also to serve as chair to Taliya. By being state and nationally accredited, our police department is already ahead of these challenges we see nationally, and we will continue to set the example for other law enforcement agencies to follow. Thank you.
Next is recognition of our Bristol First Award Program. The city has over 340 full and part-time employees that serve the community on a daily basis. We frequently hear of employees that go above and beyond in their service. To that end, the Bristol First program has been developed to recognize their efforts. Tonight, we honor our latest recipients of the Bristol First Award. Mr. John Luttrell, Director of Community Relations, will present to give us and also give us a brief overview of the program and announce tonight's award winners.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Sora. Tonight, we are proud to recognize two new recipients of the Bristol First Award. These two individuals are the 44th and 45th recipients of the award. The latest in a long line of city employees dedicated to providing the greatest service possible to the people of Bristol. The actions for which they're being recognized tonight actually occurred back in March of this year, though we felt it was best to wait until we could all meet again in person for them to be properly celebrated. The following information comes from their nominator, Dr. Martin Daughter-White. My son, who is 15, has autism spectrum disorder. On Monday, I had asked him to move the trash bin around after the truck picked it up, and he went out to watch the truck in action. The guys on the truck invited him out to load our bin, showed him how it worked, and he really enjoyed the interaction. On Thursday, they showed up at my door with a hat, shirt, and a vest for him. He was, being 15, still soundly asleep, but was so happy when he woke and got those. It was an act of kindness and consideration far beyond their ordinary duties, and they exemplify the spirit of service, consideration, and generosity that make Bristol a great place to live. Members of council, if you'll please join me in congratulating our winners, Mr. Cody Sawyers and Mr. Joe Wyatt.
Next on the agenda would be public hearings, but we have none tonight. Next will be appearance of citizens. This brings us to the acceptance, appearance of citizens section of our agenda. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address City Council on any matter that is not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will not likely be made at this time, since in most cases neither the council nor the city manager will be prepared effectively to respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and are not transferable to other individuals. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. I've been provided the list of individuals desiring to address City Council this evening, and we have one signee. It's Mike Notifer, Shady Brook Drive, Bristol, Tennessee. Mike?
I want to thank the City Council for this opportunity to share some of our concerns over the proposed Beaver Creek South Greenway. My name is Mike Notifer. I'm a lifelong resident of Bristol, Tennessee, and I live in Tennessee Hills subdivision. I continue to struggle at how the city could have reached this stage in the process without contacting the 100-plus owners along this trail. If the city had communicated, they would have discovered that there is indeed opposition to this trail. In fact, a petition against this trail is currently being circulated. It's been reported that the proposed trail is located mostly in the floodplain and can't be used for anything else. However, that's not the main point of contention. A trail located along Beaver Creek violates the inherent property rights of quiet enjoyment and privacy of the residents living in Fair Acres, Sunnybrook, Tennessee Hills, and Valley Hills subdivision. Put yourself in our shoes. Would you want a public walking trail in your backyard? It's been highly speculated that the trail will most likely increase nearby property values. While this may be true when trails are placed in vacated railroad tracks, this is far from a rails-to-trails project. I consulted a state right-of-way appraiser, and he likened this trail to a pedestrian highway. He confirmed that nearby homeowners could incur significant damages. I dare to say that several homes will most likely be torn down. I'll leave you tonight with these unanswered questions. Is this expensive as utilization at $2.4 million? What revenues will be generated to offset this type of expenditure? Can the city guarantee that the final cost will not exceed $2.4 million? How much of the $2.4 million is currently allocated for right-of-way acquisition? Will the city use eminent domain for right-of-way acquisition? Does the city have the authority to amend residential subdivision covenants? Have all available avenues been explored to connect Roosterfront Park and Bristol Motor Speedway? Is Stills Creek Park a more viable option? Do not get me wrong. I'm not opposed to the concept that this trail is just the proposed location. I firmly believe it will be better received if situated in a park-like setting rather than invading South Bristol's residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Sora, can you, I know we haven't, I know we've kind of got a preliminary look at a trail. So actually, this is at a beginning stage, but there will be public, time for public comment whenever we get to certain points. So I want the residents to know that this is at the very beginning stages of this and that I feel like we've had one presentation to the City Council, and I believe that's it.
You are correct. You had your overall master plan probably two years ago, and then more recently, a preliminary report on initial phases of this. But you're absolutely right. Before this project will go forward, there'll be an ample opportunity to solicit input from the public as to the status of the project and how it goes forward. We're very much in the embryonic phases of this.
Did we have anyone else in attendance this evening that'd like to address council?
Bill, one more question, though. How will, how will the residents in there, how would they be contacted? Would it be by letter?
We'll contact them possibly through staff. Generally, it is through a letter, much like we would any type of rezoning or any type of communications like that would be the, the property owners would receive a written notification from us inviting them to a public meeting for comment. As well as just notifying the public that it's, that it's it's, that it's, it's available. Because there'll be a lot of people that'll be interested in this project that aren't property owners along, along the trail route. We're gonna, we're gonna need, before we have that type of meeting, though, we're gonna need to be further along in this whole pandemic, of this whole pandemic maturation process before we, before we have a, a large live gathering.
Well, I just want, I just want to make sure that the Nidifers know that in some way you'll be contacted before a meeting, and your neighbors will as well. And that sometimes we do get, things get lost in the newspaper, you know, small publications. There's probably, but I think by letter, so, you know, we'd look for that.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to appointments. This evening, we have appointments to be made to ten boards or commissions. The first one is Better Property Board. Next, we have one appointment to be made for Better Property Board. The appointment will serve a three-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three. The candidate is Ms. Pamela Alfield. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
I can speak that she has served for several years, and I think she works really well with her, with the folks that serve with her, as well as serving as chair right now, works well with our staff. We're also just, this opportunity to say that we're really pleased with our Better Properties Board and the work that they do methodically, working with our citizens and working with owners and contractors who are working on different properties to give all opportunity to do repairs, to get things in shape. So anyway, that's talking in favor of her.
Fire Robin votes for Pamela Alfield, Turner votes for Pamela Alfield, Powers votes for Pamela Alfield, Luttrell votes for Pamela Alfield, and Keane votes for Pamela Alfield.
We have one appointment to be made to the Board of Code of Appeals. This appointment will serve a five-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five. The candidate is Mr. Daniel Witcher. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
I would just say Daniel Witcher has engineering experience, which will lend itself very well to the Board of Code of Appeals. Great candidate, and appreciate him as being well known as.
Fire Robin votes for Daniel Witcher, Keane votes for Daniel Witcher, Turner votes for Daniel Witcher, Powers votes for Daniel Witcher, and Luttrell votes for Daniel Witcher.
We have two appointments to be made for the Community Development Advisory Committee. The appointments will serve a three-year term ending April thirty, twenty twenty-three. The candidates are Mr. Raymond Hill and Ms. Shawna Webb. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
I'll be happy to. Raymond Hill serves currently on our Housing Authority. He also, I believe, applied for this in the past, maybe, no, he applied for Housing Authority. Anyway, I think he will make an excellent addition. Our Community Development Advisory Committee is very active and led by Christina Blevins. They have a great group that do a lot of discussing, et cetera. And Shawna Nepos Webb is a graduate, she teaches at Milligan College, lives in Bristol, Tennessee, and I think her experiences, she'll bring to that table as well.
Fire Robin votes for Raymond Hill and Shawna Nepos Webb. Keane votes for Raymond Hill and Shawna Nepos Webb. Turner votes for Raymond Hill and Shawna Nepos Webb. Powers votes for Raymond Hill and Shawna Nepos Webb, and Luttrell votes for Raymond Hill and Shawna Nepos Webb.
Next, we have one appointment to be made to the Emergency Communications District Board of Directors. The appointment is for a four-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four. The candidate is Mr. David Honaker. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
Mr. Honaker has worked in collaboration with some of our fire department officials and would be a great asset to the emergency communications.
Fire Robin votes for Dwayne Honaker, Keane votes for Dwayne Honaker, Luttrell votes for Dwayne Honaker, Turner votes for Dwayne Honaker, and Kennedy votes for Dwayne Honaker. Excuse me. Powers votes for Dwayne Honaker.
There are too many cards.
Yeah, there's a lot of cards out there tonight.
Next, we have one appointment to be made to the Health and Education Facilities Board. The appointment is for a six-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six. The candidate is Mr. Randy Kennedy. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of Mr. Kennedy?
Well, Randy serves as a judge for our youth, and he'll do great on this board, and he is a, uh... Uh, he's a great guy, and he'll do a great job.
Powers votes for Kennedy, Keane votes for Kennedy, Luttrell votes for Kennedy, Turner votes for Kennedy, and Fire Robin votes for Kennedy.
Next, we have one appointment to be made to the Library Board. The appointment will fulfill an unexpired term of office ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty. The candidate is Mrs. Ann Rife. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
She, she served as chair of several different entities, creative learning centers. She's been taking her children to the library for eleven years. You know, I think she's a great candidate, so.
She's got connections to King University as well.
Keane votes for Ann Rife, Luttrell votes for Ann Rife, Turner votes for Ann Rife, Power votes, uh, Powers votes for Ann Rife, and Fire Robin votes for Ann Rife.
Next, we have three appointments to be made to the Parks and Recreation Commission. The appointments will be for three-year terms ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three. The candidates are Brandon Ayers, Ms. Rhonda Baker, Suzy Chandler, and Mr. Curtis Rutherford. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of these candidates?
I think we probably, I could speak on behalf of all of them. And it's certainly, this time for this, we have four folks for three spots. Makes it, can make it difficult, but it's very, we welcome people applying, so appreciate.
Keane votes for Brandon Ayers, Suzy Chandler, and Curtis Rutherford. Luttrell votes for Rhonda Baker, Suzy Chandler, and Curtis Rutherford. Turner votes for Rhonda Baker, Suzy Chandler, and Curtis Rutherford. Powers votes for Rhonda Baker, Suzy Chandler, and Curtis Rutherford. And Fire Robin votes for Rhonda Baker, Suzy Chandler, and Curtis Rutherford. Rhonda Baker, Suzy Chandler, and Curtis Rutherford, pre-requisite votes.
And next, we have three appointments to be made to the Planning Commission. The appointments will be for a term of three years ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three. State law requires one member of the Planning Commission to reside outside the city limits within the urban growth boundary. Takai Shu is the only candidate which satisfies this criteria. If Mr. Shu is not appointed to the commission, council should only fill two of the three vacant positions on the commission, and a solidification of a non-resident candidate would be, need, need to be resumed. The candidates who fill the remaining two vacancies are Mr. Jason Brewer, Mr. Mark Byington, Mr. Joel Staton, and Ms. Catherine Stigers, Stigers, excuse me. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of these candidates?
Again, I think we could speak for all of, probably all of us could speak just about to every single one. But first off, I'll speak to Takai Shu, that he's relatively new. We had a vacancy, so this is his first full-term appointment. He's done a great job on Planning Commission. And I'm supporting Joel Staton, who's previous mayor and council member, and Catherine Stigers has an outstanding, uh, her background, et cetera, makes her a perfect candidate for Planning Commission.
I marked all four of them, just to let you know, so. Really good candidates.
And you didn't get away with it.
Keane votes for Takai Shu, Jason Brewer, and Mark Byington. Powers votes for Jason Brewer and Joel Staton. Got one that's not signed. Hang on just a second. Luttrell votes for Takai Shu, Jason Brewer, and Joel Staton. Luttrell votes for Takai Shu, excuse me, Mark Byington, and Joel Staton. Don't do it twice. Fire Robin votes for Takai Shu, Joel Staton, and Catherine Stigers. So we have, let me read these again. Fire Robin votes for Takai Shu, Joel Staton, and Catherine Stigers. Luttrell votes for Takai Shu, Mark Byington, and Joel Staton. Keane votes for Takai Shu, Jason Brewer, and Mark Byington. Turner votes for Takai Shu, Jason Brewer, and Joel Staton. Powers votes for Jason Brewer and Joel Staton. So Takai Shu receives the prerequisite four votes. Joel Staton receives four votes, and Jason Brewer receives three votes. So Takai Shu, Jason Brewer, and Joel Staton are appointed to Planning Commission.
Next, we have one appointment to be made this evening to the Power Board. The term of this appointment is for a period of four years ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four. The candidate is Mr. David Aker. Would anyone like to speak on behalf, behalf of the candidate?
I think Mr. Aker has already served one term, and he's done a great job. He's also the vice chair at this point of the BTS Board, and we appreciate his service and all that he has brought to that board and his communication with council.
Keane votes for David Aker III, Luttrell votes for David Aker III, Powers votes for David Aker III, Turner votes for David Aker III, and Fire Robin votes for David Aker III.
Okay, next, we have two appointments to be made to the Tree Board. The term of the appointments will be for a period of four years ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four. The candidates are Mr. Brandon Ayers, Mr. David Hacker, and Ms. Susan Turner. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
I could speak to all three. I am only, Chad, I'm only voting for two. Brandon Ayers has a background in parks and recreation. David Hacker, I believe, is still with BTS and brings that to the group. And Susan Tanner has been a longtime member and very dedicated, and been a member of when we struggled to get enough networks, so.
Fire Robin votes for Brandon Ayers and David Hacker. Keane votes for Brandon Ayers and David Hacker. Turner votes for Brandon Ayers and David Hacker. Powers votes for Brandon Ayers and Susan Tanner. And Luttrell votes for David Aker, David Hacker and Susan Tanner. Brandon Ayers and David Hacker have received the prerequisite votes for appointment to the Tree Board.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First reading of new ordinances. Tonight, we have two ordinances on our agenda to be considered on the first reading. Ordinance twenty-nine, an ordinance amending and restating the future land use plan and policy. First item on the agenda is, excuse me, read that again. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this?
Yes, Mayor, I'll be glad to.
Mark it off here.
Ordinance twenty-nine does, does consider on first reading the adoption of future land use plan and policy. As councils aware, Bristol Regional Planning Commission recently concluded the development of the city's comprehensive plan, and an element of that process was evaluation and development of a future land use policy, or future land use plan and policy. This plan is collaborative process of community input and assessment of community needs. The document's a critical component of the city's comprehensive plan, and it, as it will guide development decisions by both the Planning Commission and staff as we move forward in time. The land use, the proposed land use, future land use plan and policy was adopted by the Bristol Regional Planning Commission during their June fifteenth meeting and is forwarded with a unanimous recommendation. This, as this is an ordinance that will amend the, the, it will require a public hearing and second reading during your August fourth meeting. Sharon?
Thank you, Mr. Sora. Good evening, Mayor Luttrell, and city council members. I'm going to just summarize the proposed changes in the future land use plan tonight. As Mr. Sora stated, this, the plan will update, refresh the existing plan that was adoptate, adopted in two thousand and thirteen. What you have before you tonight is just updated in its design. It provides some additional language that provides introduction and explanation pages for people to, to try to help understand what the future land use plan is. We updated the policy language included in it just ever so slightly. We added some additional land use descriptions and images, and then we revised the map and added an inset map for clarity. So I'm going to show you, this is the overall citywide view of the future land use map. You will see in your printed copy, there is one additional land use category that we did add with this update, and that's a medium residential land use designation. So this is in the, the big fold-out document that you have as the centerpiece future land use map. And we've also included a zoomed-in version, so you can see the denser area around downtown where everything's a little denser in, in better clarity than, than what we have on the books right now. So those are the two maps that are included in the future land use plan. As Mr. Sora stated, the Planning Commission did review this and voted favorably to adopt the future land use plan and policy during their meeting on June fifteenth. So they forwarded a favorable recommendation to city council to do the same. That, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions, staff? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a second for Mr. Turner. Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance twenty-nine?
I'd like to say y'all did a great job. And it's nice that it's all been put into this format, and it's easy to read. It's very informational, and I would encourage everyone to take a look at it if you haven't already. This is online. Is it online?
It will be.
It, it will be once you, once you all approve.
Once we approve it, it will be online. So go online, take a look, and, thank you. Thank you.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Okay, I believe we're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 How? Yes.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance twenty-ten, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Bristol by adding chapter four-eight design standards. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance 20-10, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Bristol by adding chapter 4A design standards. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. This item has been the subject of a couple of work sessions and has been a pretty extensive project with our Planning Commission, as they've worked through the design standards for several months prior to making a recommendation to city council. The design standards are specific to commercial property. These new design standards do encourage and enhance our community's aesthetic appearance and appeal by promoting quality building, design, and construction practices. The new standards will apply in all business districts, as well as the commercial overlay of the Volunteer Parkway and State Route 394. All commercial construction, all new commercial construction and in major commercial renovations will be subject to the new design standards. As I mentioned, the design standards are come to you recommended with a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission. Sheriff Young is at the podium, and she's going to detail this issue, much as she's done in a couple of work sessions.
Thank you. Again, just brief history on this item. As Mr. Sora said, this is something that the Planning Commission has worked on for some time, so a lot of 2018 and 19, they were working on this during some portion of every Planning Commission meeting. And then they did make a positive recommendation to city council on December 16. City council discussed this in a couple of work sessions, starting in December, but of course, the coronavirus slowed things down a little bit, but we talked about it in more detail during your last work session on June 23. So a few of the key elements that are in this ordinance is the design standards will be implemented at the staff level. So as part of the site plan, building permit review process, staff will be looking to ensure that projects do meet the design standards. And if there were to be an appeal of any decision, that would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The design standards ordinance utilizes a menu of architectural features, so people have options and flexibility in meeting the design standards. As Mr. Sora said, this will apply to all of our business districts, so all of the B districts, B1, B1A, B1B, B2, B2E, B3. Does not apply in industrial districts, and it does not apply to residential structures, single-family and duplex residential structures that are located in the business districts. This will kick in for bigger projects, so it applies to brand-new construction, and then it'll apply in the situation that you have an improvement that is 50% or greater of the existing building footprint. So if somebody's adding on a pretty large addition. We're in this design standards ordinance, we're carrying forward the existing prohibition on some building materials, so you can't use unpainted unfinished CMU block. No single-sheet corrugated or ripped panel metal siding, and those are in existence today. And then you have limited use of wood in the B2 district, so you need to use wood for certain historical items such as storefront design, window, doors, things of that nature. So what is in this menu of architectural features? The number of features that you need to choose is based on the size of your project, and you would be able to choose from any of the items listed on the screen. So arches, accent materials, varying roof lines, adding columns, awnings, building perimeter landscaping, there's a wide variety of options to choose from. So when do the architectural features, how do they apply? We split it into two tiers, so you have projects that are under 50,000 square feet and projects that are over 50,000 square feet. If you have something that's under 50,000 square feet, you're going to be asked to put three architectural features on the facade that faces the street. And facades adjacent to the street would have two. If you have a larger project over 50,000 square feet, your street-facing facade would have five architectural features. And your facades adjacent to the street-facing facade would have three architectural features. So the ordinance before you is going to add quite a few definitions to the definition section of the zoning ordinance, so we're going to define all of these architectural features. We're also proposing to take out section 408, which is the end of our existing chapter four, and replace it with an updated chapter 4A, which includes the generalized excerpts of section 48. So some general sections that apply to the Highway 394 overlay and then the B2 district. And then we would add these architectural features in that new chapter 4A, so it would be a concise place to go look for all of your design standards in one place. The Planning Commission, again, they did look at this back in December. They recommended approval of the proposed ordinance, which is a few tweaks which we have made, and they asked us to consolidate that overlay language into that new chapter 4A. So they have a positive recommendation, and then you have here on the screen, this is the sample design standards guide that we would put out once this ordinance is adopted and we know that everybody's happy with what's in the ordinance. So this would be a guide that we would provide to the development community, just as a way to help communicate and to show them what the design standards look like and illustrate what they could be. That, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve ordinance 20-10.
Second.
Would any member of council like to discuss ordinance 20-10?
I want to thank staff and thank the Planning Commission for the work done very thoroughly on this. And I think we started it probably over two years ago with beginning to discuss. Also, the booklet that's been done is, I think, easy to understand, and the feedback from development community, we, there are a selection of options for folks to use. So it's pretty versatile for fitting the different budgets and different needs of our developers in the community. So, appreciate it.
I would just add that the purpose of this is not to make it more difficult. It's really to develop an ease of doing business. Keeping it at the staff level initially means that Planning Commission doesn't always have to be involved. We don't always have to be involved, and if there is a question about it that staff can't resolve, then of course, it goes to the Citizens Board of Zoning Appeals. So we're hoping that this will improve flow and the ease of doing business. The standards apply to all the business districts, and I think one thing that could be said about that is to elevate the, and maintain the property, as well as to extend the architectural life of buildings in our community. We look at a lot of the architecture that we currently have in our community, and some of it is very valued because it was done very well initially. We look at other buildings that are oftentimes abandoned, and we know that while they may have been built well during their time aesthetically and architecturally, they are not as appealing. So we want to be sure that we're able to elevate and maintain those property values for all of our property owners. I think you've done outstanding work, and it's been a long time coming. And again, it's not to encumber doing business, it is to make the flow do the business.
Yeah, I too serve on the Planning Commission, and it's just amazing. And I got on the tail end of this thing. These guys have put a lot of work into it, and I just want to really thank our staff for all the hard work and expertise that we have here in the city. And just, you know, thanks, Sheriff, for all your hard work. Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? Okay. Tara, I believe we're ready for a vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. There are no ordinances for consideration on second reading tonight, so we'll move on. We have several resolutions to be considered. First, we have resolution 20-41, approving the rescission, say that right, of the development agreement with AG Commercial GP and authorizing the city to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for 714 Shelby Street. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter?
Yes, Mayor, resolution 2041 and 2042 are somewhat companioned in that they're related to the same project. 2041 does rescind earlier resolution 19102, which city council entered into with the development party last fall for property located at 714 Shelby Street. Resolution 2041 also approves the sale of property located at this address to AG Commercial. AG Commercial proposes a mixed-use development comprised of commercial office residential property valued at $16,800,000. The improvements will include approximately 28,000 square feet of retail and office space on the first floor, and approximately 60 units of studio and one- and two-bedroom apartments on the second and third floors. AG Commercial will purchase the property from the city for a sum of $1,030,353.64, and this amount equals the cost incurred by the city to acquire the property, to demolish the existing structures, and secure brownfield agreements for the redevelopment of the property. Resolution 2041 also provides the city with an opportunity to recover this investment while allowing the developer an opportunity to seek tax increment financing to advance the 714 project. Once complete, this project is going to really be a catalyst for reshaping our downtown, especially the southern portion between Shelby and Broad. It's truly going to be a reshaping project for our downtown. We also have the developers, Blair Jones and J.J. Gillonwater. I don't think Jeff is here, but both Blair and J.J. with AG Commercial are here. If you have any particular questions, they're available to answer this.
Sounds great.
Is there a motion to take action on this item?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 20-41.
Would any member of council like to discuss resolution 20-41?
I'll just, great project, also that our city at different times has purchased properties and then sought proposals for development. And I think, and sometimes people feel like that's not a good role for cities, but I think we've been very judicious. I think we've ended up with great projects. So I think we can be proud and confident that we are working in the best interest of all our citizens, being fiscally responsible, et cetera. So I think this will be one of those projects that'll add to what we've succeeded. Thank you.
And having seen the proposed project, we know that it's meeting all of our design standards and results. And we appreciate the details that you have included in this project, so that it will fold in especially well with all the other architectural renderings and buildings downtown. Thank you.
Would anyone in the audience like to address counsel on this matter? Okay, Tara, I believe we're ready for a vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, we have resolution 20-42, approving the use of tax increment financing for the 714 project. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, as indicated, these two resolutions are companioned to the same project. So resolution 2042 does approve the use of tax increment financing for the 714 project. This project, as we've indicated, is located at the former Bristol Products and Coin Laundry Properties. It's a proposed mixed-use development with an estimated value of $16.8 million. Primary sources of funding for the project is an investment of $14.8 million from the developer and a tax increment-based debt in an amount not to exceed $2 million. The tax increment debt will be amortized over a not-to-exceed period of 20 years. Bristol Housing Board of Commissioners conducted a public hearing and formally considered the redevelopment plan on June 24, 2020. And the Board of Commissioners voted unanimously to approve the redevelopment plan. Mr. Joel Conkett, attorney representing Bristol Housing, is with us this evening to further discuss the TIF financing agreement.
Thank you for letting me be here tonight. My name is Joel Conkett, and I act as legal counsel for Bristol Housing and its redevelopment efforts. I'm not going to repeat some of the details of the project that Mr. Sora covered and that were covered on the previous resolution, but most of you are familiar with TIF projects, so I want to focus on sort of the key terms of this particular TIF. This property is currently owned by the city, so it's producing $0 in property tax revenue. So with the new TIF, it will actually generate, with this project, it will actually generate about $4,000 of city taxes due to the debt service set-asides required by Tennessee law for the city. The remainder of the property taxes will, of course, be sent to the housing authority to pay the amortization of the debt. The maximum loan amount on this particular project is $2 million. You know, the final loan amount will depend somewhat on interest rates and the exact amount of the final assessment once the project's complete, but that is a cap amount, so it will not exceed that. This is a 20-year TIF. Some TIFs in the past have been shorter and some have been longer, so this is a 20-year project. There is no holdback of the city tax revenue. And I, you know, really, I think that's the key points. I already covered the details of the project as far as the square footage and the number of units. You know, one important thing, I think, for this project is it will bring additional residents downtown. You know, approximately 100 new residents to the downtown area, which will only help, you know, revitalize and continue the downtown CBD to grow. And I'll just ask if there are any questions about the TIF amendment. I do believe the developers are here, and I believe they've got a few, maybe a presentation to show you, and I'm sure they're happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Any members of council have any questions for staff? Okay, is there a motion to take action on this item?
I thought there's, do you guys have a presentation? No, I didn't.
Yeah, just go ahead and let everybody say it, it'll be good. Sorry about that.
Well, thanks for having us. I'm J.J. Gillonwater, this is Blair Jones. We're two partners of AG Commercial. Our third partner, Jeff Tickle, cannot be here tonight. He wanted to be, but, so we've been working on this project for about three years now, believe it or not, and we're glad that we're here, moving in the right direction. We ready? So we're looking at about an 85,000-square-foot building, three-story, as they've said, commercial on the ground level. Commercial on the ground level and residential above. We're adding 170 parking spaces for this development. We're local guys, we're using local architects, local GCs, local tradesmen. 28,000 new square feet of commercial space for office, retail, restaurant. We're offering 60 lofts, eight two-bedroom 441, four studios, and we're putting in four ADA-accessible one-bedroom units. I mean, these new construction, something downtown doesn't see very often. This is a unique opportunity, is why we're very excited to do it. Fully sprinkled, private-lit parking, elevators, walkout terraces for each individual loft. You know, we're doing things, washers and dryers, private fitness center for the tenants, outdoor kitchens, terraces, online leasing, rent pay, maintenance requests, key-card access through your cell phone. We're including things like water, sewer, trash in the rent, janitorial services. Again, ADA-accessible, we're a block-off state, we're going to be pet-friendly, courtyard, adding green space to downtown as well. You know, we're looking at things like a new, we call it an urban suparet-type grocery store for downtown for our residents and residents. store for downtown for our residents and for people that work there, other restaurants, retail, and offices that we're currently working with. This is an overall site plan with Shelby at the top of the page and Broad Street at the bottom. Shows the footprint with parking lot. Looking down, is that Eighth? Yeah, looking down Eighth and Shelby. So you can see the architecture we're going with, you can see the balconies on the buildings with the awnings, and you can see we're raising the building up actually forty inches off of sidewalk level to get out of the flood zone, so this will be a, again, you can see looking down Shelby, it's really going to be neat. We're going to have wide sidewalks on the street side with raised sidewalks above for access to the, to the building. It's really going to be a neat look. It's something that I think's been a long time coming for Bristol. Again, steps going up to the Seventh Street, looking down Seventh and Shelby. This is what we anticipate breakup looking like as far as, as commercial tenants, so up Seven, we're thinking. These are the second and third floor plans. Second floor will have the fitness center, and third floor have a outdoor kitchen terrace area. One-bedroom floor plan, which is our most popular, we're going to have forty-four of those. We're going to have eight, eight of these corner two-bedroom units. And let's see, we're going to have four studios, eight studios, and eight, or four ADA, eight ADA-accessibles, so. The reason that we're going for the TIF is, you know, initially this project was going in one direction, and I think it was best thing for the city and for us to go, start going towards this direction, I think we all decided after working with Bill and Tom and you guys. So we're going to be buying the land from you, and we also came across the FEMA requirements after having almost had drawings complete. We had to go back and raise this building up, and it's going to be a significant cost, and that's why we're here. The TIF basically covers our acquisition and the FEMA requirements. This is net available to the city. We actually could have gone for more than two, so we're doing, we're going to do it at two for now and see. I think it's going to work great, and so it's a good project for all of us, I believe. Any questions?
That's great.
Good job.
Thank you all.
Now we'll back it. Is there a motion to take action on this item?
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty forty-two.
I'll second. Resolution twenty forty-two.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Not Tara?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, we have Resolution twenty dash forty-three authorizing the sale of surplus real property. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, may I be glad to. In April of twenty twelve, the city purchased the site of the former Aurora Casket plant. This is a twelve point three six six acre tract, and it was acquired initially to, as a potential site for the new middle school. The city purchased the property for a price of sixty-three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Due to insufficient acreage at the site, as the process went through for elimination of sites for the middle school, this site was eliminated. So over the past couple of years, staff has had conversations with different developers about the potential use of the property. The property is zoned as R3. So earlier this year, the city released a request for proposals, and Moore Development LLC submitted a proposal to utilize the property for the development of patio homes. As council may recall from some of our recent housing inventory discussions, patio homes was recognized as an important need for our community in this May twenty twenty study. The proposed use is existing or is consistent with the existing zoning for the property. Mr. Rick Armstrong presented to you at your June twenty-third work session. He's also here again tonight to make a very brief presentation and respond to any questions. Once again, this, the sale of this property does recover the city's costs of initially acquiring the property. Rick?
Good evening. My name is Rick Armstrong, I'm with TCI Group, Lowry Foster, and we represent and are involved in the development of the Moore Development Site under which you currently have a contract available to you. We've made a presentation to the board, really don't have anything more to add. This is an arms-length transaction for the acquisition of a piece of property owned by the city. We're not asking for any development funds or any cross-agreements for contractual help or commitments by the city. We're going to develop a site that will contain approximately forty-four units in that they will be the type of design Mr. Sora mentioned in patio homes. They'll be in a configuration very much similar to that of the cottages at Feathers Chapel out off of Three Ninety-four near Tri-City's golf course. We found that's a high-efficient use of land, and people enjoy that type of design with low barriers, low maintenance, and a common lifestyle that would be befitting. The development will be a intergenerational-type development, which will help to exist and coexist with King University, and in that, we're hoping that we'll have a cross-transference between folks that may be at or near retirement age as well as the folks enjoying the college atmosphere of King University. Those types of communities have been gaining a lot of popularity, and there's a lot of synergy between them to help grow community ties within a society. I don't have anything more prepared. Be happy to answer any questions if you'd like. Probably the one question you have is a timeframe. Right now, we're still in the development stage. We're working on our financing, which will obviously come online as soon as we have our contract approved and accepted by all parties, at which time this will be a cash acquisition of the land, so there'll be no financing there but financing for the project itself. And we hope to move forward within about a year. Happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I think it's a great project. It goes hand in glove with the work that's being done on East Cedar Road Street as well as the stormwater sidewalks that are being put along with Gene Avenue, and so it's, we're continuing to see a lift being made in this part of our community and really looking forward to saying, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does any member of council have a question for staff?
I'd just like to say, I guess, and even on the previous resolution of, thank Tom and all his staff for all the work you've done on that project, this project, I know it's been a lot of thank you.
Yes.
Tim, yes, Tim also.
Okay, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty forty-three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution twenty forty-three?
Good stuff.
Okay, would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Okay, I believe you're ready for a vote, Tara. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
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 Yes. Next, we have Resolution twenty dash forty-four approving the adoption of the comprehensive plan. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, City Council received a presentation during an April twenty-eighth electronic work session this spring related to the comprehensive plan. It was prepared to us after quite some time with by Design Workshop, Inc. of Asheville, North Carolina. Comprehensive plan is important to the community for a variety of reasons, but it, the key elements of this, it's going to guide your financial, infrastructure, community development, and planning decisions for years to come. In accordance with statute, the Bristol Regional Planning Commission reviewed the comprehensive plan and conducted a public hearing on June fifteenth. The following, the completion of the public hearing unanimously voted to send forward a favorable recommendation to City Council for formal adoption of the plan. With that, Sherith Young is here to detail the plan, so.
Thank you. So this one is definitely an exciting, long-timecoming project, so it's exciting to present this one tonight. This has been going on for some time, and we have talked about this in work sessions and with the Planning Commission, so I'm going to go through just a little bit, just a brief review of the process and how we got here tonight. So this has been going on for a couple of years now, and there's been a lot of collaboration on this comprehensive plan project. It started with a kickoff meeting with City Council and the Planning Commission, then we had several community meetings with a, with a community advisory committee meeting, had ten to twelve stakeholder meetings with a variety of groups around town. We had three rounds of community meetings, all of them here at the Slater Center where we put a bunch of maps and information on the walls and talked to people in the community about where they see the future of Bristol. We had some online participation activities, so some surveys and opportunity for people to commit, to comment online, and then we had a mapping exercise through a website called Map Social, so people could actually map assets, opportunities, and challenges within the city. So we took all these variety of public input sessions, and our consultants, Design Workshop, went through a lengthy process where they reviewed all the existing plans and studies that the city has, and they rolled it into this wonderful comprehensive plan document that you have before you tonight. The comprehensive plans are arranged around seven themes, and at the conclusion of the document, you have an action plan matrix, so it sets forth all the goals and objectives that are included in the chapters, and it will be a tool that we can use to track progress and to track priorities as time goes along. When Design Workshop presented this to council in April, they kind of set out some bullets of how to use and how to implement this comprehensive plan. They said, well, a good first step is to, of course, adopt the plan, to task a person to oversee it, to help educate the different departments within the city about what it is, to go through that action plan matrix at the end and prioritize the items in the order of City Council's priorities, and then to put forth an annual report on the plan, so what's happened in that year and what's been accomplished. The consultants and general planning practices to evaluate the plan every five years, and then every ten years go in and really update it, freshen it up. So the Planning Commission did review this during their meeting on June fifteenth. They voted to adopt the comprehensive plan and then to send a favorable recommendation to City Council on the comprehensive plan as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Just to say this is another one of those projects that's been a long time in the making, and y'all have just done a great job. The people that served as the group who helped do the research and put this together, our citizens, have they received a copy of this?
We haven't sent it to them yet, but we certainly will.
But based on our approval tonight?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and a letter of its completion. I think it's real important they invested a good bit of time, and I know there'll be a lot of pride and ownership that they helped to produce this document for our focus groups. A lot of time put into this.
Sounds like there was a motion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty forty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution twenty dot forty-four?
I'll just, the consultants, I think, as they got into this and visiting our community and talking to folks, I think they were very impressed and pleased and excited to work on this project for what our community looks like, and it's, that's always nice to hear.
Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Okay, I believe you're ready for a vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, we have Resolution twenty dash forty-five approving amendments from the Community Development Block Grant Citizens Participation Plan. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, may I be glad to. Resolution twenty forty-five as well as twenty forty-six are both related to the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, better known as the CARES Act. As council is aware from our work session on June twenty-third, the city received funding through the Housing and Urban Development passing through our Community Development Grant to address the financial impact stemming from the COVID-19 virus. The two elements of this resolution, the first one is needed to, in order to allocate these funds, we have to amend our Community Development Block Grant Plan, and there's a citizen participation plan that's an element of that, which was originally approved by City Council in nineteen ninety-seven, if memory serves me correct. This, but the, due to the urgency of being able to get these, get these funds into the hands of those within the community that needed it the most, there's provisions that required council to amend that participation to allow for electronic hearings and also a shorter comment period. So with that, Christina's going to talk a little bit more about the details of that, then she's going to remain at the podium and talk to you about how almost hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that we receive is being recommended to be allocated to various organizations that provided COVID relief within our community. Christina?
Thank you, Mr. Sora. Mayor Luttrell, congratulations, doing great so far. Vice Mayor Turner, congratulations, City Council, I'm happy to be here with you tonight. I unlike a lot of the projects that we've talked about tonight, this has been a relatively quick process for us in the Grants Division, which for federal is pretty amazing, but our community has seen a significant impact from COVID-19, just like everybody else, and I'm really happy to help alleviate and be in the position that we can help a lot of our community out tonight with these grant funds. So let's talk about the Citizen Participation Plan, also known as the CPP, and this is really, as Mrs. Sora said, just to speed up the entire process. Obviously, due to COVID-19 pandemic, everyone had to move pretty quickly to try to get funds into people's hands that needed them, and this is just another way that the federal government is allowing us to speed up the process. Now, the actual changes, I know you cannot see this, and I'm sorry, so I will go really quick, but it is to include virtual hearings as an allowed method for citizen participation when necessary for public health reasons, provide a five-day notice, a public comment period for proposed amendments necessary to expedite and facilitate the use of funds to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus, make minor edits that do not change current citizen participation policies, please be advised that if virtual hearings are used, real-time responses and accommodations for persons with disabilities and/or limited English proficiency will be made available to the greatest extent possible, include provisions relative to the consolidated planning process and participation waivers made available under the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, also known as the CARES Act, and last, but certainly not least, includes provisions relative to the Community Development Block Grant and other applicable U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development fundings made available under the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act. Okay, hang on. So we did have a five-day public comment period in conjunction with a public hearing that was advertised in the Bristol Herald Courier on June eighth through the twelfth. CDAC, the Community Development Advisory Committee, met on the ninth, and no comments were received from the public at the public hearing, and actually, no comments have been received in the Development Services Office thus far, and of course, you have a favorable recommendation here from the Community Development Advisory Committee to approve the revisions as presented. Are there any questions on the Citizen Participation Plan? Shall I move on? Yes, okay. All right, let's keep it going. All right, let's keep it going.
We really need to vote on, on this resolution.
Okay, is there, is there a motion to take action on this item?
I'll make, go ahead.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty forty-five.
Second.
Would any member like to discuss Resolution twenty dash forty-five? Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Seeing none, I believe we're ready to vote. Tara?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, we have Resolution twenty dash forty-six, approving the allocation of Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funds. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter?
If I'm gonna go ahead and yield to Christina, she's reviewed this, this matter with you during the work session, and this is essentially how the money will be spent, or recommended to be spent.
Recommended to be spent, that's right. So first and foremost, a little bit of history, the city of Bristol, Tennessee is classified by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as an entitlement city. Based upon that classification, the city receives an annual allocation of funds to meet certain national objectives. One, provide benefit to low and moderate income families. Two, aid in the prevention of slums and blight. And three, address other community development needs, having a particular urgency because of posing a serious or immediate threat to the health or welfare of the community and where there are no other financial resources available. And this is really how the, the Coronavirus Grant Funds came to be under the Community Development Block grant. So HUD allocated the Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, and it is to be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the Coronavirus or COVID-19. The CARES Act provides an additional one hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars to the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and that is in addition to our normal CDBG allocation. And obviously, we have to, to allocate these funds, we have to do the substantial amendment to our already approved twenty nineteen CDBG action plan, which is what we're doing tonight. Okay, so the Community Development Advisory Committee also had a public hearing here where many of our community nonprofits came and addressed their, their needs in the community. The CDAC recommendation, which we did go over in your work session, but you have it here, all the requests generally stayed the same. Believe in Bristol was cut on their second request for economic development, and the Bristol, Tennessee, Virginia Chamber of Commerce, also known as Discover Bristol, had also been significantly cut on, on their request, but everything else basically stays the same. And if you will recall from the work session meeting, we had a last-minute addition, the Bristol train station had given you guys a twenty-five-hundred-dollar request to for funding. So if council wishes to entertain that as well, you're, you're welcome to do so. Now, with that being said, the only one of these that has the asterisk beside of it is the Chamber of Commerce. Discover Bristol will require an additional waiver in order for us to be able to allocate those funds. Now, HUD has issued guidance and waivers for CDBG funds to be used for travel promotion and tourism-based economic development, which is obviously what the Chamber CVB, Discover Bristol, would be asking for. They did that in twenty eighteen in the wake of Hurricane Maria. I can be glad to take any questions you guys have on any of the projects submitted.
Okay, is there a motion to take action on this item?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty forty-six.
A second. Would any member like to discuss the Resolution twenty forty-seven?
So on the, the chamber, do we know what's involved in that process for how burdensome it is for doing applications, et cetera, for, and it's a relatively small amount of money to, to, do you know that at this time?
It can get a little tricky, but we actually would have to get a waiver from HUD Secretary Carson, from his office. To do that, we'd have to show him, obviously, how tourism has been hurt in our economy and how that, they would respond to the Coronavirus. So, but if, obviously, councils would like for us to pursue that option, we'll be happy to do that. If we do not receive the waiver, then we would need to go back and reallocate those funds either to another organization or, or someone else at a future time.
I guess, motion to take action, or we ought to do that? Okay. Wednesday, roll call, yeah.
Yes.
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 I have just one quick question. How quickly will we know whether or not it's?
I do not know, Councilwoman Powers. It could take a couple of weeks or maybe a couple of months, but I'll definitely be glad to keep you guys abreast of that. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Resolution twenty dash forty-eight, confirming the appointment of a student member to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Let's, let's go back and pick up, uh, Order of Resolution twenty forty-seven.
And Miss Wong, sorry guys. Sorry about that.
They'll approve a certificate of compliance for the license of sale of alcoholic beverages.
Okay. Mr. Sora, would you like to summarize this matter?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. This authorizes the issuance of certificate of compliance to obtain a license for retail sale of alcoholic beverages at Belmont Package Store, which is located at one-ten Belmont Drive. Staff received, earlier, staff received a request from the current owner of Belmont Package Store to transfer ownership to EKS Enterprises, Inc. Tennessee Code provides that before a transfer of existing license may occur, the applicant must first obtain a certi- a certificate of compliance for the local governing body. This is, we've had periodically before this board over the last few years, these types of requests. EKS Enterprises, Inc. is owned by Paula Matzner, Charles B. Hunnigan, Jr., and Elizabeth Matson, who have collectively either managed or worked at the current establishment in excess of twenty years. The applicant appears to meet the requirements for issuance of a certificate of compliance under Chapter Six, Article One of the City's Code of Ordinances. It's important, I think, to note that the Belmont Package Store currently possesses one of only five licenses to issue to retail alcoholic beverage stores within the city limits. The current city code does limit the number of retail alcoholic beverage stores to one per five thousand persons residing in the city. Staff does recommend approval of Resolution twenty forty-seven.
Any member of council have a question for staff?
Make a motion to approve twenty forty-seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution twenty forty-seven? Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? Okay, Tara, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Now we'll go to twenty forty-eight. Next, we have Resolution twenty forty-eight, confirming the appointment of a student member to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter?
Yes, Resolution twenty forty-eight does, confirms the appointment of Amy Shai to serve as student representative for the Parks and Recreation Commission. The commission, as council is aware, is comprised of twelve members, of which two are selected by Tennessee High School staff. Dr. Kim Kirk, the high school principal, has recommended Ms. Shai to serve in this capacity. I think Ms. Shai is a rising junior at Tennessee High School. The appointment of Ms. Shai will be through the period of May thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Any member of council have a question for staff? Is there a motion to take action on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution twenty forty-eight?
It's refreshing to have a student.
I, I can't remember, are we al- is that a voting position and ha- are they voting? Are we allowed to? It is a voting position. Thank you, I know we made that change several years ago, which I think is really important to give our students that power.
Okay, would anyone in the audience like to address council? Mr. Aker?
Well, since I'm here and chairing that board, the, the students are a great opportunity to see how the city boards work and everything, and I believe it was either Councilwoman Powers, when you were on the board with us, that we decided to add a second student. We've always had one on there, but that way, they kind of camaraderie when, when you're on a board with a bunch of adults and, and everything. That way, when one rolls off, which I think his mom's in the audience tonight, and there's another one coming on, they're very interactive, it's, it's been good. We've had great students over the years, and, you know, looking at some of the boards, we have a lot of boards, and I don't know if there are any other boards that have any of the high school students on them. Don't know if it'd be appropriate, I mean, I was looking at one, I can tell you the library board, I've been in their curbside pickup during this situation for my daughter like crazy, and I think she's gonna volunteer there, but it'd be a good way to get the young people involved in our community, and maybe keep them here. I think we've got three of our council members are graduates of the local education system here and everything, and so just, you know, it's a good thing, and glad to see we've got another one coming up. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I believe we're ready to vote. Tara, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. This brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to, and you might want to get comfortable, it's a rather lengthy list. Minutes of the June first, twenty twenty call, city council work session. Minutes of the June second, twenty twenty city council meeting. Minutes of the June ninth, twenty twenty call, city council meeting. Minutes of the June twenty-third, city council work session. Resolution twenty forty-nine, awarding a bid for the purchase of delivered stone and sand. Resolution twenty fifty, awarding a bid for purchase of stone and sand on a picked-up basis. Resolution twenty fifty-one, awarding a bid for the purchase of in-place asphalt. Resolution twenty fifty-two, awarding a bid for the purchase of bulk asphalt products. Resolution twenty fifty-three, awarding a bid for the purchase of bulk concrete products. Resolution twenty fifty-four, awarding a bid for the purchase of refuse containers. Resolution twenty fifty-five, awarding a bid for the purchase of highway salt. Resolution twenty fifty-six, awarding a bid for the purchase of highway pavement marking application. Resolution twenty fifty-seven, awarding a bid for the purchase of water and sewer supplies. Resolution twenty fifty-eight, authorizing the purchase of software support, financial software system. Resolution twenty fifty-nine, authorizing entry in agreement with National Recovery Service, Inc. for collection services. Resolution twenty sixty, authorizing the purchase of field reporting software support. Resolution twenty sixty-one, authorizing the purchase of software support for computer aided dispatch system. Resolution twenty sixty-two, authorizing appropriation agreement for the birthplace of Country Music, Inc. for the operation and support of the Country Music Museum. Resolution twenty sixty-three, approving an agreement with Believe in Bristol, Inc. for funding support. Resolution twenty sixty-four, authorizing appropriation agreement with the Bristol Chamber of Commerce for program support for fiscal twenty-one. Resolution twenty sixty-five, authorizing appropriation agreement with the Bristol Chamber of Commerce for Convention of Visitor Bureau Services. Resolution twenty sixty-six, authorizing appropriation agreement with Paramount Foundation, Inc., Paramount Centers for the Arch. Resolution twenty sixty-seven, authorizing appropriation agreement for the Second Harvest Food Bank, Northeast Tennessee. Resolution twenty sixty-eight, authorizing appropriation agreement with the University of Bristol. Resolution twenty sixty-nine, authorizing payment in support of United Way, Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia in fiscal twenty twenty-one. Resolution twenty seventy, authorizing payment in support of the Bristol Public Library and Literacy Academy for fiscal twenty twenty-one. Resolution twenty seventy-one, authorizing payment in support of Network Sullivan Partnership for fiscal twenty twenty-one. Resolution twenty seventy-two, authorizing approval of Tri-Cities Regional Airport Foreign Trade Zone, number two hundred, two thou- two zero four, financial contribution in fiscal twenty twenty-one. Resolution twenty seventy-three, authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the Bristol, Tennessee, city school system and the city of Bristol, Tennessee, for the School Resource Officer Program. And Resolution twenty seventy-four, approving a grant agreement with Virginia Department of Transportation for utilization of federal highway administration funds for the Bristol Met- Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Glad you said all that. Would any member of council like any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the items included in the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tara, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. This brings us to the best part of the evening, the Board of Education Liaison Report. If Dr. Tooter would please come forward.
Thank you, anybody said best part of the evening for anything that I would have to say, but so, thank you. Congratulations, Mayor Luttrell and Vice Mayor Turner. Thank, it's nice to see you all in person. Seems like it's been forever, I know we've seen each other over video, but it's nice to be here in person. Thank you again for our partnership with the School Resource Officers, we're very excited about endeavoring to add those folks to our elementary schools this year, so thank you, we appreciate that partnership, and can't wait to get that rolling. I wanted to let you know, probably what's on your minds most of all is how we're planning to open our schools in the fall, and so we are actually rolling out our plan publicly tomorrow. We worked collaboratively with Kingsport City Schools, Sullivan County Schools, and the Sullivan County Health Department to develop our, our plan. It is modeled after a plan that Nash- Metro Nashville Public Schools released a couple of weeks ago, but certainly modified for our community, so it will provide the basic framework for how we intend to open our schools. We surveyed our families about two weeks ago now, I guess, to gauge their level of concern at returning in person, and really just kind of said in general, what are you thinking at this moment? Would you prefer to come back in person, or prefer an online option, or you're undecided at this point? We had about sixty percent of our families who said they wanted to return in person, twenty percent said online, and twenty percent were undecided at the time we did that. So we value, we think it's very important that we have our children back in our buildings with us, that's the, the best place for them for a variety of reasons, but we recognize that our families have a variety of circumstances that may cause them concern for that, and needs to have another option, therefore, we will be offering an online option. We do intend to open our buildings on August third, but we'll also have an online option for families who request that. So part of what we roll out tomorrow will, will present information about how we will determine what that will look like, and it really is based upon the, it's based upon the Epi曲 that the Tennessee Department of Health publishes on their website, and it's based on an average of cases per county, per one hundred thousand residents over the last fourteen days, and so we're wa- watching that very carefully. Anything from zero to five essentially means we're in good shape, and we have very minimal precautions in place. We do have some, but minimal. Anything above five would indicate we need to ramp up our precautions a little bit, and if we get above ten, eleven or more, then we're looking at reverting back to online. But in any case, we are not closing like we did in the spring. Even our online expectations, if you've heard anything in the news about that, we have a significant detailed plan that we have to present to the state for what our remote learning will look like, and we have to meet legal requirements for number of instructional days, and number of instructional hours, and those sorts of things. Attendance will be taken, grading will be applied, which was not in the spring, so it'll be a significant shift for our families for that remote learning option. Let me make sure I've shared everything with you, so all of that's gonna come out tomorrow in terms of our middle school. If you haven't driven by, we've made significant progress, we have walls going up, which is exciting. It's a, it, right now, we're projected to have occupancy of the renovated gym, we hope, by essentially Labor Day, or just shy of Labor Day. So that'll allow our rising students who are coming in for this school year to utilize the gym again, which has been- which has been a hardship for our district to not have that gym in that facility. And it's looking amazing. And then, if you've driven by the site, you can visibly see the new buildings going up, which is exciting to see as well. And we've named the building. Hopefully, you've seen that too. Our school board took action on that at their June meeting and have officially named it Bristol, Tennessee Middle School, which is reverting back to its old name. So, that's exciting too. Do you all have any questions for me?
No. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, this moves to the City Managers' Report.
Yes, Mayor, let council know that I'm working with Mayor Venable to set up, I guess, an information session for the three Bristol County Commissioners. We hope to get that scheduled this week, but as soon as that's nailed down, I will let council know. So, I think you would enjoy being there and being part of that. But this informational session, I guess it's about, it deals with the TIF financing and the Sullivan County element of that for the 714 project. Also remind council of our work session on July the 28th. This will be at 11:00 a.m. And I think you probably need to have the discussion. Is this going to be an in-person meeting or is this going to be an electronic meeting? And you all can discuss that as you get into your comments section. But now, I'd like to talk a little bit about Mayor Fire Robin and her farewell, at least for a two-year stint as mayor. And you know, the first 75%, you know, I guess the first 18 to 20 months of that, it was full of some pretty good stuff. You broke ground on a new middle school, broke ground on a new hotel downtown. We saw additional development at Exit 74. We had the whole regionalism discussion and partnering with networks and exploring those opportunities. The Bristol Business Park, not only the project that was started and completed during that period, but now we have a second one in the embryonic stages of development. Partnership Park One, the successful grant application there. So, you had a lot of really good excitement through the first 20 months. And then, it got real interesting. But I really can't think, especially over the last four months, I can't think of a mayor more uniquely qualified to handle this pandemic than you. First of all, you come to this with an education. You have a graduate degree in public health. That's pretty strong for the types of issues that you, as a mayor, needed to address during that pandemic. And how you led this community, how you led council, how you led staff, very, very, very impressive. And we're very appreciative of the time and effort. I don't think anybody really fully understands the time that you have spent on Zoom, the time that you have spent on WebEx, and just the volume of calls, not only city-related, but also the things that Christina talked about, the various nonprofit organizations that served the underserved within our community. And you've long had a passion for those organizations, but it really shined in the last four months. We've had sometimes five weekly calls with the Governor's Economic Recovery Group. And now, those calls are down to a couple of times a week. But this requires a lot of time and effort, and you threw yourself into these programs. We're going to miss you. You've been such a, well, I know you're not going anywhere, but transitioning out of the mayor role, I know from a staff standpoint, we're going to very much miss you. Our Community Relations Department has put together a gift for you. And this has been our tradition for honoring your time and services, Mayor, for the last year. You got one of these last year, and the previous mayors have received these. We also have an additional video that we would like to show that's responsible.
Terry put it together. Y'all watch out. I think we need to black it out if Terry put the video together.
Terry's our operator. There's our, this is our video.
I was nervous.
100 years ago and roughly...
100 years, 100 years old? You'll prepare for 100, Margaret.
You were elected to City Council.
Like I said, Terry's trouble.
This is tonight's video, not to air. But we are going to miss you, and we're certainly glad to have you around for all the way through at least 2022.
100 years ago and roughly 300 miles away from Bristol, history was made when Tennessee became the 36th and final state needed for ratification of the 19th Amendment, which guaranteed that the right to vote would not be denied based on sex. 53 years later, the City of Bristol adopted the council manager form of government we use today. The sole woman sitting on that first council was Mrs. Dot Madison, who served her community in many ways during her two terms, including as vice mayor. In 1997, history would once again be made as then-Vice Mayor Margaret Fire Robin was unanimously chosen by her fellow council members to serve as mayor, the first woman to do so in the City of Bristol. Since that time, the mayor's gavel has found a home in the hands of other women, each fiercely dedicated to the service of Bristol's citizens. As we mark the centennial celebration of the hard-earned right for women to vote, we salute those who have led our community thus far and those who will lead us into the future.
Thank you very much.
Wow. Wow, that's hard to follow. City Council comments.
Well, Bill, I'll ditto everything you said. But you know, one of the things that you've got to love about Margaret, you're just a really good person. I mean, you really are. I mean, it wouldn't matter if you're serving on City Council, if you were serving in the many, many nonprofits that you serve in. It's really quite amazing, and all of those are full-time jobs. How you juggle them, I have no idea.
I'm going home to work after this.
I'll say thank you for your service in all of those areas and especially this year and the last four months with the COVID. It's been tough, and a couple of us know up here that being the mayor is very time-consuming. It is truly a full-time job. Everyone wants the mayor at their event. And not only that, it's so many of the meetings that you've had, Zoom meetings and that kind of thing. But, you know, I was just going to, I was going to go through our stuff with, it's kind of getting late, but I was going to say our planning department's been very, very, very busy. So, congratulations to them, Tim and all of your staff, Sheriff. You guys have done a great job, and I mean, that's pretty impressive, everything that we've done. Bill mentioned about meeting, our next meeting coming up. I'm going to suggest that we meet by Zoom for our work session. I think we can kind of look and see how things are going, you know, for our next council meeting as well, see how that goes. But I'm going to suggest that. I don't know what others think about it, but...
I agree.
I agree. Also, I think by our work session, it would be excellent to ask our Health Department folks to give us an update again. I think that would be very appropriate to add that to the agenda.
There have been a lot of great things that have been going on, and especially with our planning department, our economic development, our community relations, our parks and rec, all of our safety entities. I mean, we're just, it's been so interesting that while the world has taken a pause for COVID, it seems like business has carried on here at a very fierce pace, and we appreciate everything that y'all have done. On a note, a different note, I serve on the Bristol Rhythm and Roots Committee as well as the Birthplace of Country Music Committee. And I'm sure you all know by now and have seen the video that this year's Rhythm and Roots has been canceled. It was a very collaborative effort on the part of the Birthplace of Country Music Board to come to that conclusion. We worked with our health, public health officials in both Tennessee and Virginia. There was a lot of analysis. Our City Manager played a strong role in that. And we looked at trends and decided that it was in the public's best interest for us to pause this year, realizing that our numbers right now are trending upward and that by September, we just, there were too many unknowns. So, it's with a heavy heart that that was canceled. But the good news is that Bristol Rhythm and Roots reunion for 2021 has already been set. You can go to the Birthplace of Country Music Museum's website to see that. Additionally, Dr. Tudor, I think one of our main priorities, we have several, but one of our main priorities in the coming weeks is to get our children back to school. You mentioned the epic curve. And I, for one, believe that wearing a mask is a choice, that we shouldn't have to mandate it out of consideration for one another in those situations, that we would don a mask to help with that. Not all the time, but at your choice and as you feel. But in the coming days, we've got to be especially diligent in protecting one another. I get that it is a choice, but here's the deal. This is the bottom line, parents simply, that we've got to protect one another so that our businesses can stay open, so that our schools can open. And we've got to be very cautious, wear our masks when we're in public in places with lots of other people. We've got to social distance. We've got to continue to wash our hands. And we've got to be mindful that this virus is still amongst us. Our children desperately need to go back to school. We have children that need that continuity. They need the services that are provided by our school system that they simply cannot get at home. So, it's our responsibility to work as diligently as we can to assure the safety of our total community, our school-aged children, as well as those citizens that are at risk. And I hope that we'll all continue to work very diligently so that we can remain open and can remain at full capacity moving forward.
I just want to say thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Margaret.
Were you finished?
I've already told them.
Oh, okay.
And congratulations to them.
Thank you, and thanks, everyone, for the support for Vice Mayor. That's about all I have. Feeling a little late, so...
I'll be real quick. You know, I'm sitting here and watching this video. You think about all the people that served as mayor in the past. And I know these are big shoes to follow or to fill. But my promise is that I will continue to do my best to serve all the citizens, employees, and businesses of our wonderful city. You know, we all know that our community, state, and country has experienced some difficult times, and we'll probably see some more. But Bristol, Tennessee is a strong community, and I know that by all of us working together, we'll make it even stronger. Thank you. Good night. Be safe.
I haven't done my...
Oh, I'm sorry, Margaret. I thought you were finished.
I tightened up stuff, so you got to hold on to that gavel for just a second. Yeah, no, I didn't respond. So, anyway, sorry, I've got a little bit to say. Occasionally, I'm at a loss for words, but not very often. But anyway, I just wanted, who laughed? I wanted to thank particularly all the citizens of Bristol for trusting me in this role on City Council, particularly for the length of time I've been on, apparently 100 years. Anyway, thanks to my City Council for placing your trust in me for this role and being supported for two years that I served. I want to thank also City Manager Bill Sora, who works hard to be sure that we're all equally informed and fully informed as we need to be to make the decisions that impact our city and our community, and who takes the responsibility to, for what our city does provide, so that our city can provide the best in municipal services, which I think we all see. We saw it tonight in the personal actions. We saw it with accreditation of our police department. We expect high things because we've gotten high things. So, we really appreciate, and that's thanks to our staff. I appreciate your professionalism, your readiness to go out of your way to help me as mayor and us as council to have the best information, to make good decisions, to provide for y'all, providing communication, transparency to our citizens and valuing that. We're proud of the work that you do, the face you present to our community, and the attitudes that you carry when you do that. I look forward to our new leadership, both of our mayor and vice mayor, newer to our council, but have picked up speed, and it will be a learning curve. No matter how long you've served, certainly it has been recently. Y'all are both up for the job. Malin's experience with his career in business and management, as well as his management and public relations with the Bristol Pirates, provides him with experience and expertise for working with our citizens in the mayor role. I'm sure he and Vance will make a great team together, and that's very important, to be able to depend on each other. The past several months have been a learning curve that have been challenging, and it appears that that is due to continue. And just today, we're up 20 positive COVID tests every day recently. It's pretty sobering. As it's been said many times, we don't have a playbook. No one does. And I urge all of us and our citizens to understand that we're learning as we go. And when I say "we," that means me, it's our council, it's our staff, it's our state, it's our nation. Everybody is learning as we go. Research is being done as we go. Best practices are being developed as we go. COVID spread is increasing significantly across our state. Ours is here too, and we are not immune. Tennessee Governor Lee's and his task force have done intensive, good work in preparing guidelines and the Tennessee Pledge, which if somebody hadn't found it, it's online. The basic guidelines are the best that we can do to keep our economy open and going. We have an all-star race at Bristol Motor Speedway in a week. We will have visitors. That decision was made at high levels, and with understanding that Bristol Motor Speedway will be following stringent guidelines. And we understand those are in place and going to be continued throughout. We urge all our community, employers, employees, citizens, follow the Tennessee Pledge guidelines. They're the best defense we have. And thank you, Councilwoman Powers, exactly, for the social distancing, mask-wearing, sanitizing. And on a call this week, across our state, mask mandates are happening because that's the only way that city councils and county commissions and mayors know to help protect their communities. So, we hope to encourage mask-wearing, encourage social distancing, and it is to keep us all, keep our businesses open, keep our frontline workers, first responders, healthcare workers, our teachers, parents, children, everybody healthy. Stay healthy yourselves. Keep your family and loved ones healthy, and thank y'all very much. And thank you for allowing me to not get gavelled out. Thank you.
With that, meetings adjourned.